I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on February 23rd, 2024 through the posting and notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. Pledge allegiance today from Edison Middle School. Commissioner Millard.
Thank you, Acting President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce Amanda Springer, the Principal of Edison Middle School. Amanda started her career at the Janesville School District in 2000, where she spent 15 years as a seventh grade teacher and four years as an academic learning coach at Edison Middle School. And actually, when I left in 2000, that must have been when you came. Well, I'm sorry I missed it. Now I gotta figure out where I was. Oh yeah, here we go. In 2019, Principal Springer hadn't had the opportunity to become an academic learning coach at Franklin Middle School until the principal position opened at Edison. Amanda has a Bachelor of Science degree from UW Oshkosh and a Master's degree from Cardinal Stritch. Principal Springer, who do you have with you this evening?
Thank you. It is with great honor that I introduce Lily Therner. She is a seventh grade student at Edison and is an active member of our Student Council and show choir. When I put out to our seventh grade teachers asking for recommendations to lead us in the pledge tonight, Lily's name was at the top for many, many reasons, but the three that stuck out to me was the fact that her teacher said she adds value to the classroom through her contributions and participation in class. They couldn't commend her enough for the effort she gives day in and day out, no matter what, and said that she is a true role model to her peers. And last but not least, they just summarized in a nutshell what a great kid Lily is, that she's hardworking, cooperative, and overall just a kind human being to all her peers. So Lily.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertainer motion to adopt February 27th Board of Education agenda. Motion by Commissioner Ardry, second by Commissioner Hennawell. All in favor? That passes eight zero. Safety message. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. So Commissioner Ardry is always talking about when in terms of safety, one of the first things is to know your surroundings, right? Be mindful of where you are and what's going on around you. And I was thinking about that and also thinking about the weather we had today, and people were out everywhere. And there is somebody on a motorcycle that goes past my house probably three or four times a day in February. And so to me, just knowing your surroundings, especially when you have aberrant things like this kind of weather going on and people are engaging in things that you don't anticipate or don't don't expect in February, like people being out more walking their dogs or running or motorcycling or whatever, just really be mindful always of where you are because you never know when things are going to change or be unusual like this, that behaviors will change and you won't expect it and somebody could get hurt. Thank you.
Commissioner, next we have student presenter. Let's start with Reed Pratt from Arise Charter School. Hi Reed.
Good evening to the members of the board. It's great to see you all here today. My name is Reed Pratt. I'm 12 and in seventh grade. I've been at Arise for the last four and a half months. When I moved to Arise, I was mainly looking for a quiet place to learn as well as where I feel comfortable with my peers. I really love learning and was struggling with our traditional classroom setup. I had a hard time staying focused and really felt overwhelmed. I'd been asking my mom and dad to try virtual school since I was in second grade, and they finally agreed to let me try. When I was still on my child period, I was still set on being in my exploratory classes at Franklin, which at the time were exploring computer science and orchestra. In January, I decided to switch to being at Arise for full time. When the semester ended, I'm now taking photography and exploring careers classes at Arise along with my core subjects. Next year, I am planning on enrolling in medical detectives at Franklin. I like that I can still have access to both schools and have different classes. Even though I didn't start the year with my classmates at Arise, they were all welcoming right away. The day I came for my orientation, I met some, I met one of the students and we became good friends. My teachers and classmates were willing to help me adjust and learn how to do virtual school. It was also really helpful for me to be able to go in on Tuesdays and work with my friends and teacher. I am able to ask questions and get help on things I'm unsure about. Now that I am in Arise, I can work at my full potential. Things I appreciate about Arise are included to but are not limited to. Being able to have flexibility in my schedule, being able to work at my own pace, being able to get help from a real teacher if I get stuck, being able to go to the Arise Lab every Tuesday and have fun with friends and get help from teachers in real time. There is so much more to come for me at Arise. I am very excited to see what I can do at the end of the year with what I've learned. There are lots of opportunities to try new things and be social at Arise. I've enjoyed making things on our Glowforge, a wood burning laser that lets you create things that you can then build. I have also found myself loving the social events available to us. This fall, we all went to Skelly's, the Milton House, the Humane Society, and the Hedberg Library. We just recently went to the Discovery World in Milwaukee. Our next trip is in March. We will get to do a variety of STEM activities and go ice skating at the Janesville Ice Arena. The elementary students have the opportunity to participate in monthly virtual socials. During the socials, they play games and interact with each other and their teachers in a fun, interactive space. Another awesome activity for students to participate in is our Go Baby Go project. Middle school students in the Janesville School District are building a motorized vehicle for children with spina bifida. Children will receive their motorized vehicles on March 14th at Blaine's Farm and Fleet. There are a lot of benefits to online learning. Arise is really flexible and can meet the needs of each student, even of us in middle school. Some students take one course, others take a full load, and others take hybrid. The teachers are really helpful and willing to let us try lots of different things until we find the right fit for us. When I started, I needed a little bit more help learning how to do the online work and navigate the systems. Ms. Matthews went through, through, Ms. Matthews went through the stuff with me during our open meet time and answered any questions I had. She also works with us in small groups on lab days or one-on-one if we needed. There are also two pair professionals that work with us. I spend time with Ms. Liscano. She is funny and likes to engage with us. She is very helpful. Since starting online learning, I've really grown as a learner. I have had to learn how to be organized, ask specific questions, and manage my time. I'm just one of 200 students at Arise. There are currently 20 elementary students, 60 elementary, or 60 middle school students, and 120 high school students. They're all, they're all doing great things too. For example, 43 high school students made the honor roll for Semester One. 19 high school students are taking an AP class. We have three youth apprenticeships. At the start of the second semester, Arise started as a co-op program where students can earn credit and money for working while learning about careers that interest them. One lucky senior is going to learn to earn the $10,000 Herb Cole Scholarship. Arise is also trying to help students who might have struggled before starting there. In sema, in this semester, Arise is piloting two credit recovery classes for high school students. They are Algebra One and Biology. The Arise students, including me, appreciate your continued support of Arise Virtual Academy. My parents and I are grateful for all the different opportunities that are available to me, even though I'm not in a traditional school setting. I've grown a lot and hope that staying in Arise will help me, help me to keep growing as a person and with my academics. If you'd like to see more about what is happening at Arise, like our Facebook page, or reach out to get more information and visit us at Arise.
So on my notes here, Reed, is it true you're a sixth grader?
I am a sixth grader, but I do participate in seventh grade classes.
Good for you. Outstanding job. Thank you. Next from Rock River Charter School, Tara Dunaway. Did I pronounce your first name right?
Kind of.
You can say no. You can say no. Tara.
Yeah.
All right.
Tara, you need to turn on the microphone.
Thanks Tara.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mr. Holtzman School Board Commissioners and members of the community. My name is Tara Dunaway, and I'm an 18-year-old senior at Rock River Charter. I am in the e-learning program where I work on online classes. Before I came to Rock River, I was a student at Craig High School. There are multiple reasons why I didn't have success at Craig and chose an alternative path. In most of my classes at Craig, the workload was overwhelming for me and was too much for me to handle. I transferred from Rockford, and as a result of this, I was behind in credits. While at Craig, I tried to do a full schedule plus take extra classes on momentum for credit recovery. It was very hard to balance both, and I felt like I was falling further behind. Additionally, to the large population at Craig and the long hours caused my anxiety to increase and get in the way of my learning. At Rock River Charter, I am in the morning section of e-learning. I attend daily for two hours, and I can work on the classes I needed at my own pace, then go home and continue to work on my classes. With fewer students, my anxiety levels have decreased, and I can get more individualized help from the teachers. Currently, I am working on the credits I need to make up and focusing on graduating on time. At Rock River Charter, not only do I have a path to graduate, I have a path to graduate on time, and I like knowing that I can have the opportunity to graduate. Rock River Charter School has a current enrollment of 224 students spread between four different programs, including Alt Ed, Ramp, e-Learning, and the GED 2 Option 2 Program. Our current waiting list for placement stands at 144 applications between the four programs. To date, we have had a, had 102 graduates, and our overall success rate is steady at 95.14%. Rock River Charter School is one of the schools selected on a national level to take the National Assessment for Educational Progress, the NAEP test, otherwise known as the Nation's Report Card. On February 15th, a number of our seniors were selected to take either the reading or mathematics NAEP test. The Nation's Report Card is a resource that offers a window to the state of our K-12 education system and what our children are learning. The results provided by educators, policymakers, elected officials, and parents across the country with invaluable information regarding how our children are doing compared to other children in the nation, the students who took the NAEP are helping to inform decisions about how to improve education in Wisconsin and our country. In addition to the NAEP test, our freshmen, sophomore, and juniors are preparing to take the pre-ACT, ACT, and forward test. Rock River Charter has sponsored two Culver's Scoopy Nights so far this year, resulting in a profit of over $1,000. This money is used to fund things such as our culinary club, Giving Tree, PVIS, and student engagement. Our final Scoopy Night will be held at Culvers on Court Street on May 7th. Thank you to all who help support our school. Rock River Charter School has over 80% of its population identified as receiving free and reduced lunch. Because of this staggering statistic and as a result of successful Scoopy Nights and the support of the community, Rock River Charter was able to pack 100 filled bags with non-perishable grocery items and distribute them to 50 students over winter break who did not benefit from the Bags of Hope Drive. These break bags, as we call them, help provide food and nutrition during the week and a half school was not in session and food was not provided. We are happy to say that we are, will also be able to offer this to 50 students over spring break as well. Rock River Charter School truly shows its students that they care about them, not only when school is in session, but at all times. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself to you tonight and listening to some of the amazing things that are happening at Rock River Charter School.
And next from the Rock University High School, Annabelle Hunt. Pretty sure I got that right?
Yeah. Pretty sure. Hi, my name is Annabelle. I'm a senior at Rock University High School, and I've been there for the past four years. I chose Rock University High School because I was intrigued by the middle-college model and that you had an opportunity to get an associate's degree by the time you graduate. I also liked the fact that everyone chose to be there, and in more traditional schools, some people aren't very excited to be there, and so I wanted a place where people were excited to learn and wanted to be there to learn. I also really liked that it was small class sizes, so you were, had a more personal experience with your teachers and your other peer members. When I went, came to Rock University High School, I already knew that I wanted to become a surgical tech or go into the healthcare field, and I wanted to complete the surgical tech program at BTC. However, I'll unfortunately not be getting an associate's degree by the time I graduate, but I'll finish all the general education and prerequisites needed for the program. Because the surgical technology program requires students petition to gain access or admission, I'll have spent the last, I've spent the last four years completing the prerequisite classes and general eds needed for the program. Since my freshman and sophomore year, I've been taking TC, AS, and AP classes like AP Psychology, TC Chemistry, AS Medical Terminology, and then as I was a junior, I enrolled at Blackhawk Tech as a student. I've successfully completed General Anatomy Physiology, Advanced Anatomy Physiology, Microbiology, Digital Literacy for Healthcare, and I'm taking right now Word Documents and Customer Service Essentials. I'll find out soon, hopefully in the next few weeks, if I'm accepted to the program and I'll be able to start next semester in the fall. Once I graduate, I'm looking forward to being able to travel more. I am going to Europe in the summer, so I'm really excited about that, but I like the, I'm excited for the freedom I'll get once I graduate. And then also, I'll be a step closer becoming, reaching my end goal of being a traveling surgical technologist. Rock University High School has prepared me for my post-high school college life because I know there are many high schoolers who face the challenge of having started as a structured schedule from elementary school, middle school, high school, and then when they go to college, it's a lot different. You have a bunch of breaks in between classes. Sometimes you don't meet every day. Maybe it's once a week, twice a week, and it's a lot different than a high school class where it's 45 minutes a day, like every single hour. But being at Rock University High School has helped me get used to having the school every day, or not school, not having school every day, the freedom that comes with being there, and then also not having a strict schedule. It has helped me learn to balance my life between school and my life. It was hard to get used to at first, coming from a middle school where there's a structured schedule, but being able to adapt while in high school will really help me in the long run for my post-high school education, and I'll be used to the expectations and will know how to balance my life and school. Being at Rock University High School has not affected the electives or extracurriculars I have been able to take. All four years, I've been dual-rolled at Craig High School, and I participated in their orchestras, as well as been an athlete in swimming gymnastics. I've also participated in a few clubs that Rock University High School has to offer, such as book club and student leadership council. I was also able to start a club with a few of my friends, and we created a creative writing club. And I've also participated in a club at Craig for chamber orchestra ensemble. Because of my success as a high school student, college student, and community member, Ms. Kerr and my teachers and coaches nominated me for the Young Women of Distinction Award. To my surprise, I was actually selected, and they will be honored at a ceremony and dinner on May 8th. While my senior year is quickly coming to a close, I'm grateful for my time and experiences at RUHS, and I'm looking forward to what my future holds, and RUHS has helped me get there. Thank you.
I guess we don't have any tonight? Wait a minute, I got a couple. If anybody came in a little late, you can still, Patrick, the gentleman in the second row, the maroon shirt on, he can help you fill out a form and you can speak during this. So first person we have is Mr. Shane Punzel.
I was hoping I wasn't going to be the first, because that's a tough act to follow.
Could you just identify yourself, where you live, please?
Absolutely.
You've got about three, three minutes.
Sounds good. Shane Punzel, 1603 North Harmony Jive here in Janesville. Good evening, School Board Superintendent, Athletic Directors, School District Leaders, and Community Members. I'm a board member and a coach for the Janesville Lacrosse Club. I'm the assistant coach for the boys' high school team. The current sophomore and freshman players are young men that have had the privilege to coach since they were seven and eight years old. My son Sawyer, who spoke to you in the spring, if you may recall, is a sophomore on this team. I'm here to say thank you. I'm grateful for your support in adding lacrosse to our sports opportunities here in Janesville. Man, I didn't realize it'd be this nervous standing up here right now. Lacrosse is both the fastest-growing sport in the US and the oldest sport in North America. The Janesville Lacrosse Club has been providing youth the opportunity to play this sport in the greater Rock County area for about a part of 19 years. The next step, of course, and we're going to talk about this tonight, is to join the WIA. You, the school board, have given the direction to the school district and the athletic, given that direction to the district and the athletic directors. They took the challenge, and will be providing that tonight. We couldn't be more excited. Your efforts don't go unnoticed by the Janesville Lacrosse Club. We are committed to and will continue to support the school district in making this a reality. Head Coach Matt Combs, who is here with us tonight, and I are committed to applying for and earning the opportunity to continue coaching this group of fantastic men. You should know, the boys will have 15 to 16 games this year that Coach Combs was able to take care of for our schedule. And what's crazy and amazing about that, it's only two games less than what the WIA has as a requirement for the current season that they have for lacrosse of 18. So it's an amazing accomplishment by Coach Combs and our board. Knowing that in the spring of 2025, the high school boys and girls could be a W, could be WIAA participants playing lacrosse while representing the schools of, in our co-op, competing at the highest level in our state and earning a high school letter that says lacrosse could be amazing. None of this would be possible without the school board's dedication to our student athletes, the support of the school district and athletic directors, the community, including all of the other lacrosse programs in our state who are cheering loudly tonight, I will tell you, the players' families, and most importantly, our student athletes and their commitment to the game that they love. Thank you for your vote of yes, wink, wink, okay? Thank you for supporting my son, my players, this great game. Lacrosse is known as the fastest game on two feet, and I promise you, you won't be disappointed. Thank you very much, and go Birds. Appreciate it.
Next, Mr. Patrick Lyons.
Hi, Patrick Lyons, 2017 Ruger Avenue here in Janesville. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Tough act to follow, even Shane there. I'll keep my comments brief. I don't want to reiterate too much what Shane said. I am here in support of the Janesville Lacrosse Club and hopefully a yes vote from board to adopt a co-op for lacrosse for the school district, so. I'm a Janesville resident, father of three children. Two have graduated from Craig High School, and I do have a freshman at Craig currently who would enjoy playing on the lacrosse team for, for Craig. They've, all, all three of my children have played lacrosse throughout their youth and played club for the lacrosse club while in high school, because it was not offered as a WIA sport, and it's meant a lot to our family. It's a great sport, teaches kids what I think is a very important teamwork model, and, and any kid can learn from that. It's very inclusive as a sport. So I'm here to request that the board take the necessary steps to make a yes vote happen and to approve and sponsor a WIA co-op for the boys and girls at the high school level. I do believe the district's capable of, of adding lacrosse without detracting from the other sports that it already offers, so I don't think this will be a negative for any of the groups at Craig or Parker. Without adoption, I think the club will have a very difficult path going forward. WIA will book all of the available game times with the clubs that are, that have already adopted. I think we're lucky this year, as Shane noted, I think we have 15 or 16 games. I don't think that would be, will be possible next year. I think we would be unable to book any more games, so the high school level would probably falter. So in closing, let's get our kids to put down their electronic devices and get on the lacrosse field with their teammates. So thank you for your time. I'd also like to say thank you for donating your time as board members. It's really important to our community, so I wanted to say that. And thank you for your yes vote. So thanks.
Good evening, School Board Members, Superintendent, Athletic Directors, School District Leaders, Community Partners. My name is Rachel Dunn, and I live at 3515 Amherst Road in Janesville. My husband Jake Dunn and I have coached the girls' youth lacrosse team since 2021, and Jake was the head coach for our high school girls' team last year, and I was his assistant coach. We began coaching when our daughter Rowan was in sixth grade. She is now a junior at Craig High School. Our daughter Eden also played in 2021 and will be finishing out her youth career on the eighth grade team this year. We are hopeful that with a potential yes vote, we will have the opportunity to see both of them play on the field next year, representing the Janesville High School Lacrosse Team. The Janesville Lacrosse Club has been an active organization. The Janesville Lacrosse Club has been an active organization in Rock County for approximately nineteen years, providing our youth with an opportunity to learn an ever-growing sport that has captivated athletes and fans alike. It has an exhilarating gameplay and team-oriented dynamics that all of our players, coaches, and fans have learned to embrace. Our boys' club has had a strong following with a very dedicated coaching staff and a large pool of players. The club and coaches have been extremely supportive in providing, excuse me, providing Jake and I the time, support, guidance, and resources to grow a sustainable girls' program that mirrors the success of our boys' programs. The club has placed a priority on being inclusive and providing an equal opportunity to play this great sport, no matter of ability or gender. Without the support of our outstanding club and the boys' coaches, our girls' team would not be as successful as they are, so thank you. This support has come at a very crucial time. As many of you know and as everyone has spoken to, girls' lacrosse, along as lacrosse in general, has witnessed an impressive surge in popularity. This was especially evidenced by a recent study conducted in the academic year of two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two done by the High School Athletics Participation Survey. The outcomes of this highlighted a forty percent growth margin in participation on girls' high school lacrosse teams nationwide. This was an increase of forty percent from just the previous academic year. As a parent of two girls and a coach of many, these are extremely exciting numbers. And Jake and I feel very honored to be part of fostering the growth of female athletes within our community and supporting all of our lacrosse teams, families, and participants. With that said, we are looking ahead to next steps in securing the future for all athletes and our lacrosse teams here in our community. That means a potential yes vote for joining the WIA. We are extremely excited that together we can all be a part of this very monumental time for athletics in our community and growing the love and success of lacrosse. On behalf of Jake, myself, our daughters, our players, and the sport of lacrosse, thank you for your time, your consideration, and your potential yes vote. We look forward to placing Janesville High School Lacrosse on the map. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Apparently, all of our lacrosse speakers tonight, it's very hard to follow all of them. I wish I had gone first. But we're here to talk about an exciting opportunity for our state, for our WIA Association, and of course, Janesville School District. So, you've had an opportunity to see the proposal. We spent several months talking about it. Just kind of the broad strokes is, for the Janesville School District Athletic Department, bringing on a sport, the sport of lacrosse, is definitely on our arc for strategic planning. And we were directed to bring it forward, and we are happy to bring it forward. And we did the best to explore every possible opportunity, which included inviting other school districts to participate. We've identified for Atkinson and Milton as districts that would participate with the girls' and boys' program. We've identified the best that we can, what the financial cost would be for the first year to start up, and then, of course, the anticipated annual fee moving forward or the expense to the district. We're excited that it's another spring sport. Typically, some, be starting somewhere around March ninth, tenth, eleventh, depending on the year, and the state championship culminating in the early part of June. It'll be paralleling some of our, the seasons of other spring sports as well. I really want to, again, just thank our youth lacrosse organization and the great work that they've done building a foundation for us. Definitely something that we always want to consider with fidelity is, how do you sustain a program? How do you build a program? Do you have a feeder system? And it's a great situation that we have here that that system already exists. I also want to thank the hard work of Ben McCormick and Clayton Krieger, our building athletic directors, helping us to create this and helping us to make this happen at our schools as well. So, are there any questions?
A motion by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Paul. Questions? Comments? Anyone? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? That passes eight zero.
Thank you.
All right. Five point two, presentation of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal audits.
Good evening. Included in your packet is a report, the financial reports, the audited financial statements for both the district and Rocky University High School. RUHS receives a separate audit simply because it's a charter school, and that's part of the requirement for the continued operation of that charter school. So, really, our focus is on the fund ten, excuse me, the district's overall audit. Again, there's a lot of detail within your board packet. A couple of things to note. One, a big thank you to Matt Sebastian Knudsen. Matt, as you may recall, is a CPA. He really is our point on gathering the audit and preparing the audit for the auditor's consideration. But it truly is a team effort. Get a little feedback here. So, it's everyone really from curriculum instruction to human resources to special education. Everyone has a finger in the audit, so to speak, because it covers a number of different topics. Even if you think about human resources, right? So, human resources has a significant role because of licensure, right? So, if we're out of step with licensure, that becomes an audit finding for us, right? So, it really is all hands on deck when it comes to the audit. I'm fortunate enough, again, to work with Matt and a really good team within business services to prepare that. There were no findings. There were no deficiencies. There were no material weaknesses, right? So, that's great. It's a rather dull audit, and we really like dull audits, right? We don't want anything exciting related within the audit. There were no adjusting journal entries. We had no issues with internal control. And really, segregation of duties is not an issue for us because of the staff that we have in the office. Now, that doesn't mean we rest on our laurels. We'll always continue to look to improve our practices from budgeting to internal control, so on and so forth, but it was really a positive audit. Couple of highlights, if you will, and I'm really referencing the presentation that was provided to the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee on February twentieth. Wendy, excuse me, Wendy Unger, who is the lead auditor for Baker Tilly, our audit firm. It's her presentation. Again, it's an unmodified audit, which means it's clean. And the financial statements accurately represent the activities of the district. Couple numeric values real quick. I know there's many more exciting things to discuss rather than the audit. There was a positive contribution to our district's fund balance to the tune of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's good, right? It's not addable, so that's a whole nother topic and discussion. But that's a good contribution to our fund balance. Our fund balance remains just above seventeen percent. I believe off the top of my head, our board policy is seventeen to twenty-three percent. It is a challenge because as our budget grows, right, and if you wanted to contribute to fund balance, you need larger dollar values to which we're not aided on. So, our fund balance, if you will, is comprised of approximately twenty-five million four hundred and sixty-three, excuse me, twenty-five million four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Now, that's a snapshot in time. That includes prepaid expenses. It also includes things which are not spendable, such as a balance of common school funds and a cash balance. Keep in mind, right, what happens every November is we need a line of credit in order to meet our obligations. So, we're not sitting on twenty-five million dollars throughout the year. So, I'll probably stop there because it's really exciting. I'll certainly entertain any questions if you have them. This is probably the most important, but hopefully, thankfully, boring presentation that I'll ever do.
I just want to take a minute to thank Baker Tilly for their service of the audit, but also thank everyone that was involved in the audit for someone that has led nonprofits for over twenty years. I'm very familiar with audits, so the fact that you had a clean audit, unmodified, with no journal entries, like I noted that, like no journal entries. That's huge. So, thank you for all the work. It really does, or should, make the community very proud that we have a very fiscally responsible business office under your leadership, so thank you.
Yep, thank you, and I'll pass that on as well. Thank you.
I would encourage my fellow board members to review the committee video from that meeting. We went through it exhaustively, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks, Dan. Next item, five point three, report on action taken at the convention. Commissioner Ogry.
Riveting. All right, here we go. Now, I'll be really, and I'm not, we didn't discuss any of the resolutions that were proposed, but, and I'm not sure how many that anyone looked at. But long story short, everything that was proposed was passed. So, we didn't have any issues. And I would say there's probably a couple of resolutions, and keep in mind what the resolutions are for. It is to provide the WA, the Wisconsin Association of School Board Lobbyists, the platform to go lobby with the legislature on behalf of the school boards around the state. So, a couple of those had received a fair amount of lively discussion, but was passed. One was on special education, just the general policy, really focusing on, it was some cleaning up of language, but just the processes. Nothing that really stood out there, but just the key piece, it was special ed. So, continuing with that note, really focusing on seclusion and restraint, reducing the amount of input. I think that's the best way of saying that. And seeking ways to just use the standard practices that have been out there to really reduce a lot of the seclusion and restraint. So, it was to further say, yeah, let's continue doing that. The Office of School Safety, really developing that office, and then, more importantly, putting forth the nominees behind it so it really can have the meat to help the school districts really focus on safety. As we look at, well, I'll just say, focus on safety. I, that was the other one that stood out. A fair amount of rewriting and discussion on licensure and certification. We've well-known of the shortages in some of the, not shortcuts, but some of the unique ways of trying to go about connecting people with licensure to be in the classroom in various places. That received probably, I'm going to say, the better part of a half-hour discussion of our two hours of meeting through, I think it was fifteen different proposals. But it passed pretty overwhelmingly. And really, it was just cleaning up some of the language to start to address really some of the alternative ways of providing overall licensure, but with the fidelity of making sure that there are no shortcuts being taken. I think that's all I will share with that. I have the document with all of the resolutions and all of the votes from those, so if anyone's interested, just let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Thanks, Greg. And we'll move on to number six, Finance, Building, and Ground Committee Report.
After the, you know, I know we've had a safety message, but I thought it was important. And when we think about what month we're in, and we're in February, and one of the things that I found because of the ridiculous weather that we've had, that is very un-February-like for Wisconsin, one of the things that was noted, really, was some of the workers at Align Energy, is the poisonous plants, poison ivy, poison oak. They're still poisonous. Even though they may be dormant, if you come across those, the effects are still the same as they are in the middle of the summer, which we don't often think about those things. But I think it was important to highlight because we continue to have interesting weather, I would say. The biggest part of our meeting, actually, we're going to talk about more of this. I will say probably the one thing that stands out. Yes, we'll talk long-range planning. The audit was a big part, but understanding your tax bill. Mr. McCray does an outstanding job of breaking down how the school district contributes to the tax bill. So, I should have looked to say, at what point in the meeting was that? But if you fast-forward and get to that, it's a fairly succinct, for Dan, it was succinct, way to go over the tax bill, so it would be wonderful just to review that because really, it makes it much easier for us to then talk with the people of our, of the city about their tax bill, at least our impact, which is important as we look forward to where we're going in the future from a referendum standpoint. I'll end there. Any questions?
Questions for Greg? Thanks, Greg. Item number seven, Preview Long Range Facilities Plan. Mr. Bob Morris and Mr. Andy Lyons from EUA. And the superintendent.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce Bob and give you a quick overview, and then we'll kind of work together as a tag team here. Our goal tonight is to provide the board with some information. First and foremost, just about the process that we've been using. Second, about the input sessions that we're going to have on our next, actually, tomorrow at six, Thursday at noon, and Tuesday at five, six o'clock again. But what we want to do is provide you with an opportunity to engage in activity that our folks are going to be able to participate in during these sessions. And the activity is going to give you an opportunity, after we go through a few of the slides, to start thinking about prioritizing and what prioritizing looks like from our capital improvement process. There's a bunch of slides, and again, when you think about the presentation, we've got a couple hours with our community. Most of the slides that are in your slide deck, you've seen before. We've reviewed with you. So, we're not going to go through each and every one of those. But what we do want to do is take some time to ask you to start thinking a little bit about the priorities. And our practice tonight to ask you to participate in those is not to just use those as, well, this is what you said, and finally, this is where we're going to go. It's just to kind of give you an introduction of what our community is going to go through, and then we're going to share the same information with our staff. And we'll be able to then start to prioritize some of the areas of which we need to pay attention to. And it'll be a great exercise. I've participated in it. It's relatively simple to think about, but the process is a little bit more complicated in your mind about, well, I have to choose between one and five. How do I organize that? So, we're going to work through that. I think what I'd like to do is just introduce Bob Morris. Bob's from EUA. We work on a weekly basis, probably twice a week, with a group of folks from EUA and Cullen, point of beginnings, to talk about our process, what we're going to present, what this looks like, how do we go about doing that? And I'm so thankful that we have some professional partners to help us along the way because that's all I would be doing. because that's all I would be doing, and Dan would be doing if we didn't have their help. So thank you so much, and I'll turn it over to Bob. There's the down.
Right. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm representing myself and Andy tonight. Andy unfortunately couldn't be there, be here. He had a family emergency come up that he needed to attend to. But that's okay. We can move forward. The presentation, as Superintendent Mark was saying, is mostly information that you've already seen before. So we're going to kind of click through it and move on to this new piece, this kind of prioritization tool. So these slides are familiar. These slides Mark and Dan will actually be presenting. And as we move through, when we get to the actual facilities assessment, we're talking about the building conditions and site conditions, like which we've talked about before, and the educational adequacy and sharing that information with your broader community. And the goal is really to focus on the key takeaways instead of diving as deeply into those as we did with you. The cost information, obviously, regarding building conditions is something your community will need to understand. And then we have some pauses built in this presentation for community members to talk amongst themselves and get some feedback going. Again, educational adequacy, we've shared these before, talking about what the trends are in school design, and then the results of the assessment, the key takeaways. And after these key takeaways, this is where we really get to this first moment of asking your community, and now asking you, to help us think about prioritizing, prioritizing the needs that have come out of this. So I think at this point, we're going to ask you to actually participate in this. So in order, there's a couple ways to participate in this. There's a link at the bottom of the sheet there, or there's a QR code, which you can actually scan on your phone. If you have trouble reaching the screen, I brought some pages along with me that I can pass out to make it easier to scan.
Did you just like take a picture?
You had it already? Is that presentation itself too? Click on the little link in the presentations. Yep, that works. You don't need the phone. You can do it directly from your computers, from your devices. In fact, it's probably a little bit easier that way.
Page thirty-six, if you're looking in the document.
And as you are starting to do that, I think what I will do is flip screens so that I can show you the survey tool, if I can figure out how to do that. Oh, thank you. Go to that first tab.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's the one. And so is it possible for me to drive at all?
Yes. So when you, when you are on there, you have to prioritize it, because if you have a touchscreen, you can flip it up and down. We're using arrow key on a highlighted one, and it'll move up and down.
This is the wrong one. It should be this one. So your computer should look like what you're seeing right now on the screen. And what you can do is use these little arrows right here to move them up and down. What you think is most important should be at the top, and what you think is least important should be at the bottom. You can actually also drag them, or you can use the arrows, whichever is easiest for you. If you are trying to do it on a cell phone, it gets a little futtier, but you can do it on a cell phone as well. On a mobile phone, it looks like this, so it's a little harder to read.
So what, what I, I don't want you to get caught up in is this the absolute. This is just your first blush to get an example of what our public's going to do. I'm not going to hold you to, you know, your email address to that absolute answer. Just to kind of go through, and it'll help get us an idea of, of where you are. And again, it's a prioritization. When we think about that, since we talked about whole prioritization, what does that mean?
And this first question relates directly to the concerns that were brought up in the educational adequacy assessment. And so what we're really doing is saying, these are all those concerns that were presented as we start to think about how to move forward, which are the concerns that you feel are the most important to address first?
Do you want to like review them?
Sure. So the first question is a prioritization question. The second question is just a catch-all. If there's anything else we should be looking for. The third question is just what is your role within the community? And then we have a second set of questions that we're going to look at in a minute. And then as the results come in, see if I can do this. What we can do is actually review the results as you're completing them.
I would just add that there's no right or wrong answer, right? There, there isn't. And the reality is that we have to be able to create a priority because we can't, we're not in a position to do it all at once. So we have to start somewhere. So that's what we're asking you to do.
How's, how's the tool going? Is everyone figuring out how to operate the tool? Okay, good. So as you finish your surveys, you can actually look at the screen and see what your fellow board members are saying. And I don't want to start any wars amongst you, but if you need to discuss further, this gives you a good opportunity to see what other people's thoughts are.
There should be a spot on there that says save my responses, so when you click that, we got it all. Is that it?
Okay, the results are interesting. Create collaboration areas and other project spaces ranked number one, although I can see there was an equal number of first choices for enhanced safety by creating layers of security. However, more second place votes went to modern, modernized career and technical education. All right, and then we went on to renovate, to expand special education and intervention spaces. Replace outdated classroom furniture was in fifth. Upgrade auditoriums and performance spaces next. Libraries and resource spaces. Upgrade existing outdoor athletic fields. Update gyms, locker rooms, and team spaces. And, and then last was the relocation of athletic fields at Monterey Stadium and Riverside Park. So interesting results. Thank you for those of you who created some, some open-ended responses. I'll move out of that one, and we can kind of see, one of you answered parent guardian. The rest of you answered community member. You can be both, so that's okay. So some additional responses here, which I think will ma, all make sense. As we start to get additional responses from your community, what we're usually looking for is trends that we can start to see if there are other things that we're missing that we need to start thinking about. All right.
Where are the results on our computers?
On your computers, you don't actually see the results right now. We can send these results out if you would like them afterwards. But yeah, your, your device won't actually show you the results at this point.
One of the, yeah, one of the things that I can acknowledge is as, as the director and leadership team went through this process, I thought about the next day and go, would I change my, my ranking, right? And so probably not from first to tenth, but maybe is five and six flipped, or is two and three flipped? And that's what we, we don't worry about that at this time. What we're trying to do is get generalities, and you see how quickly this device provides us with generalities. We'll use this as example to continue to have talking points for our community so that they can see, and then we'll share the community's result with you. So then you'll be able to see what that looks like. We'll also be able to then use that tool to shape what our parents thinking. Do they think the same as community members? Do they think the same as staff members, right? And so we can definitely continue to give you that information. So the purpose isn't to make it a direct, like we're going to analyze what the board said tonight because it's just a snapshot, but the thinking would be if we gave you this next week, it'd be about the same just because your ones and sevens wouldn't flip-flop. Your fours and fives might, but that just is where it is. So thank you for your participation.
All right. Moving forward from there, this becomes sort of our first break for this exercise, and then we move through some additional information. We have an opportunity for the community to talk amongst themselves about their, what they saw as the results, to process through that together, because oftentimes we find that the talk that comes out of the exercise may actually be more important than the exercise itself, right? And I would say that's true among you too. If you, if this spurs you to continue talking amongst yourselves, that's, I think, real value. The next part of this, we talk a little bit about phasing. And this is introducing the idea that we understand that as we're looking at these broad scope of needs, it probably is more than you can bite off in one chunk, so to speak. And so we're looking at, we've already talked about the possibility of a November Phase One referendum. But that November Phase One referendum has to be built with a future phase in mind, with where we're going with a long-range plan. Future phases after Phase Two tend to, you know, after, as you get out five, ten years, those phases become less defined because the reality is the, the information on the ground begins to change as five or ten years come out. So we want to have a direction that we're heading, but the definition gets less as we start to look further out. And then, Dan, these are really your slides. I don't know if there's anything you want to say on these, or should we move forward? Keep moving forward. So some history of the finances within the district and some perspective for the community to understand. And then we get to the next survey. So we'll ask you to take this one again, similarly to the survey results before. The focus here is more on that idea of phasing. We know we can't do it all at once, so as we start to look at capital maintenance needs versus modernization of educational spaces and athletic fields, how do we start to balance those? And where do we focus our energies first?
Can the commissioner have that slide up? Forty-five.
Do you want to flip to that second one?
Leave it up for a little bit.
Oh, yeah. Yep, that's the one. So you have a couple additional questions to kind of look at here. The first one is talking about the capital maintenance needs, fixing the things that are broken versus academics, performing arts, and athletic space needs, and how do we rank those against each other? How do we understand what needs to be done first? And then the second question is about where do we focus those energies? So we're presenting the possibility of saying, let's focus on the two high schools, or the three middle schools, or do you focus instead on the elementary school levels? Or do you try and spread everything thinly kind of across the entire district? And obviously, as you start to spread more thinly across more buildings, the depth of what you can do is less at each individual building. So that's kind of what we're trying to get at here, is where is, what is the right strategy? Or where do we focus, knowing some limited resources? Go ahead.
When you asked the community members during this presentation, particularly on this form, that question number two about how they would project resources for the renovations with those different options, are they going to have at the ready that breakdown that we had as board members as to how much needed to be in? I mean, that would be helpful information for me as a community member, saying, oh, my gosh, out of this big amount.
The capital maintenance needs at each individual school and level, is that what you're talking about?
Right, because I might choose to spread the renovations across the twelve elementary schools when I see that seventy percent of that budget is for elementary schools. Will they have that information so they can make an informed decision?
That's, that's, that's a good point. Right now, we were not intending to share that as part of the presentation because we're trying to keep it out of the weeds, but that's something we could consider.
Even if it was just a little fact sheet saying, the twelve elementary schools equal seventy percent of this number, the high schools were the, just because otherwise, how would they be able to make an informed decision as to how to advise the district?
It's a, it's a fair point. I think the one other part to remember in that equation is the costs you have seen are only capital maintenance costs. So we haven't even attempted to put costs to all those educational modernization needs, which are at least an equally large share of that potential budget. So it does get a little tricky as we start to share those actual numbers, but I think your point is well taken.
Just at a, like a very high level, it doesn't have to be in the weeds like we saw, but just at a high level so they could have something to base their decision off of.
We could do it specifically related to these categories. What are the needs at the high schools, the middle schools, and the elementaries? Yeah, okay. I'll take that back to the group. Yeah, sorry.
On question number two, is there a reason that there's not a choice between? Okay, after four, spread small renovations as evenly as possible. I'm troubled by the word evenly, because evenly means, okay, everyone gets a twelve. No, not twelve, but whatever, as opposed to spread renovations. Equitably, yeah, thank you, versus, okay, because we've got some, we've got four old schools, and we've got a couple of brand-new schools. And so when you say equal, you follow where I'm, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. What you're getting at is to address needs, to get everyone up to an equitable level as much as possible as opposed to spending an even dollar amount. Right, yep.
So might I say, I mean, saying small is very leading, so just maybe removing the small.
You're, you're true. I, you're absolutely right. It may be leading because I think there is some truth to that. If we attempt to do something for everyone, it does really mitigate the amount of impact that those things we do can have, but that is true. Yep. Kayden, do you mind taking a couple notes for me, just so I can remember those two things? Appreciate that.
We got you covered, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. All right, I'll bring up the results so we can kind of see what's, what's emerging. Okay, so where we're at right now, in first place, fairly substantially, is address capital maintenance needs. And then academic environments, followed by modernizing performance arts and athletic spaces is in last place at this point. Doesn't mean it's not important, but in last place from this group so far. And if we move on to the second question. Let's see. Spread renovations across the twelve elementary schools is actually the first, the most, with five responses. And then spread small renovations as evenly or as equitably. And then spread small renovations as evenly or as equitably, I think as we've revised it, as possible across all schools was second place with three votes. None of the other focus areas actually received any votes. Okay? And then there's some open-ended responses as well, which you can see there. Secondary schools first to determine where best to spend on elementary, private funding, consider that, and building maintenance. Okay. Other thoughts or questions from this exercise?
I just want to add one thing. As we decide where the money would go in that, I didn't see anything in there that said the most critically needed spots.
Yeah.
Because that to me is very important. I don't care what level it's at.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. And I think we have to be realistic about where we're at in this process. Remember, this is our first engagement round with your broader community. So I think what we're trying to do more than anything else is take a little pulse and understand where your community is at, how they're processing the results from that assessment. Where this is really going, again, is really to take some of those things, generate some bigger ideas, and then bring those more tangible ideas back to your community to get some more tangible responses to more specific proposed solutions. So we will, we will get to that point for sure.
Bob, if I could just interject, also remember, these are the first time likely that our community who don't have engagement in our school will have an opportunity to go through the presentation of which you've been going through for two months now. So we have to help them understand the big picture of what our needs are, how we're going to, what the high priority versus, you know, the 1, 2, 3, 4, the green versus the yellow versus the red. I mean, we skipped through all those slides, but part of that process is to be an introductory so that our public has a little bit better understanding of what we're talking about. And then this is the initial piece. And so then I'll let Bob kind of talk about where we're going.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I need to catch up. So who is this survey given to?
Right. So the plan, starting tomorrow, this survey is going to be at a community session, which the community has been invited to tomorrow evening. And then the next one is Thursday afternoon. And then the last one is March 5th. So three different sessions to hopefully catch as many community members as we can. The idea is to share out what you guys have already seen, the sort of the results of that facilities assessment. And then to begin to get some reactions through this survey tool to help us sort of understand, engage where your community is at. So it's those three meetings. That's the ones that are on the board here, February 28, 29, March 5. Then our goal is to come back to you and kind of share those results with you and with the broader group. Here's where, what we're hearing. And use that to help inform as we start to look at potentially matching costs to solutions and trying to develop those big ideas. We'll come back March, April with some of those big ideas and start to present those and get reaction to those big ideas, which leads us to a community-wide survey, not this kind of a survey, but an actual rigorous, to every household sort of survey to understand how they're reacting to the ideas that we think we are moving forward and also to get a better understanding of tax tolerance and all of that. And whether your community is willing to support the cost implications of that. Survey results will come back in June, which means we're potentially defining a Phase One referendum's scope in July and August.
Thanks, thanks for that. But I guess I should have asked, my best guess, based on past practice, related to public sessions and, for example, budget sessions? We may have one person show. So I'm guessing we would be very fortunate if we had a dozen people at each one of these things. Hopefully, I'm wrong, that that's much more. So my question really is, how valid can this actually be? In those three sessions and this one be if only 20 people do it?
Right.
Right? That, to me, as a board member, you'd be like, well, that's nice, but that's only 20 people. How do I, how am I supposed to?
Yeah. That's a, that's a valid question. I think we have to see what the results are and who's responding and kind of evaluate with our planning team, with your administration, what that's actually telling us and what it isn't to use that to help guide. The other thing we're doing is distributing this to all staff. So we'll be able to aggregate those results separately and see what the community members that came.
Getting this exact thing too?
The, not the full presentation there, but they are getting the opportunity. They've got the educational assessment has been made available to them already. But then they are getting this survey tool as a separate exercise for staff to complete. Mark, do you, anything you want to say on that?
Yeah, we will share basically the processes. We'll share with our principals so that they know what their staff are going to take. And then we'll share it with the staff in our March newsletter and let them know. And again, the idea isn't for us to allow this specifically to drive everything. We feel like it's really important for us to have public input in community session. So we're, we're trying to educate them on, you know, what the project is, what our capital improvement survey shared, how much, you know, what does it look like, costs associated with that? That will also help us, Bob, can you push your button so it's mute there? Thank you. That will also help us generate a little bit more specifically the questions we ask in the full survey that we'll mail out and utilize to our whole constituent base. Because again, we want to probably be a little bit more focused on what are we going to ask people? And right now, you know, I don't think this is the questions we want to ask necessarily. That's fine, but we need to get more in depth. So we're going to get some information. We'll share that with you. We, you're right. I think we're going to have 10 or 12 folks at our evening sessions, pre-registered, maybe a few more show up. That's pretty common, right? We're excited about anybody else that wants to come. But we'll share that information. We'll have some more conversations. Dan and his team, along with our maintenance folks, are also looking deeply into the very specifics. You know, they're trying to determine what the plumbing and what the electrical and all those pieces. So again, we're using this along with Colin and Ewa as an advisory, right? So that when we, you know, we're going to drive some things to the board to say, all right, when we say what needs to get done, there's some mechanical things that we probably are going to make some recommend, like we need to. And, you know, that probably is a question we might not ask because the reality is we need to. It's just a matter of how much do we need to? And that's where those questions come back.
I encourage all board members to go on the School District of Janesville's web Facebook page because one day ago, they shared information about the community conversations and share that with all of their networks within that because I just did that 30 seconds ago. That way you can get more members to be at that, those community conversations. So you get more accurate survey results.
And I'm going to add to that even more than like the wide share. You can share directly with key individuals that maybe you know that you really want to make sure is seeing that information because sometimes those individual contacts can really be seen more than just a random share. So consider you can do that as well with, you know, people that you feel are going to help spread the word.
So just to follow up on, you know, as we look through this, where our goal would be to be able to have a community survey answers back by the end of the school that year. And then we would have some opportunities. I think there, there will be opportunities for the board to maybe have some intents, right? Maybe we're not ready to say yes for sure, but if we can publicly say there's some intent, we'll work in July and August specifically defining what that looks like. So that if we do move to a referendum, we'll know what those specific questions are well in advance of August. That's the goal, to try to define those pieces. But again, if there's questions along the way, our job moving forward is to inform. So we'll start to communicate with, Dan and I have done one, and I've got another one with Patrick set up in the near future with community organizations to talk about what we're working on and what it looks like for the district.
Thank you all for your engagement with this process. Appreciate it.
Future meeting dates, times, and agenda.
The PPC, the Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee, will be meeting on Monday, March 4th at 4:30 here at the ESC. The next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, March 12th at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. And our Finance Buildings and Grounds meeting will meet on Tuesday, March 26th at 3:00 PM. Location is still to be determined.